Through the 2022 year, we will have five, potentially five elections. And we feel like those are going to cost about $30,000 an election. So for the Elections Department, we're up about $66,800 from FY '21 to FY '22.
Alicia, I've got a question. So this technician that we're talking about, are we going to cross train in our IT department? Let's say if he was sick or something happened? Or do you know if they have to be certified to understand how to provide technical support for those machines? Or do we know anything in depth past that? Because this is such sporadic work and you're depending on one person.
I do not know the answer to that. I do think that they have to have training. I do know that they have to have training from Dominion. And obviously, this individual had training from Dominion because I do not think that we have allocated resources from our IT department to cover, to cross train.
And are we paying them like an hourly rate? Or is it fixed based off the number of?
It's an hourly rate.
Okay, thank you.
So go to Department 1501, the General Administration. The biggest increase there, other than the salaries, is for the wellness. And you heard Swede talk about a while ago, the extra money that was put in for wellness. Blue Cross Blue Shield had been giving us $40,000 for wellness. They've now increased that to $50,000. And then we got an additional $7,500 from Mutual of Omaha if we, if we elect to go with them to increase this wellness budget. And so their idea was to continue with the Wellness Fair and then put in an, a health and wellness app, which they found a developer to do. And so we will, the intention in the increase is to use that app and to also offer high-risk coaching to our employees who we know are at risk. So employees that have diabetes and high blood pressure and maybe are dealing with cancer or some other ongoing situation, we will have a wellness coach, somebody who is trained at dealing with those situations to help those people, maybe smoke cessation, you know, to work with them individually, not just a hotline that you call and get one person one day and another person another day. It's somebody that works month in and month out with these people that have higher risk. And, and that has traditionally shown that in the long run, those people's health becomes better, their claims go down, and they live longer, healthier lives. So that's a part of what we want to do in that Wellness Line this year.
Are we going to reinstate where there's requirements to get those, that, the rate, the cheaper rate? Because my understanding, the program was initially initiated. You can't force anyone to take it, but it was initiated. Is that correct? And you correct me if I'm wrong, but they had to have some type of participation to have a cheaper rate. And the idea was, you know, if you help them out in their pocketbook, hopefully they'll help themselves with their health.
We are continuing to do that. But everyone has to go to June 30th for the wellness initiative beginning in July. And there's two steps this year, the biometric screening and the HR assessment, which you go in and take. So there is still two requirements in place.
And so that is what will be carried over on July 1st, is what I'm asking about.
So everybody has to go to June 30th to meet those two criteria.
Well, I think we need to monitor that. I mean, I'm all for doing everything for our employees and whatnot, but I don't want to see us deviate too far. I don't want to make it complicated, but deviate too far that it's just almost a freebie. If you want to take advantage, you can. If you don't, you don't. I think we need to keep in alignment with what the original intent of the Wellness Program was. That's just my opinion from one person.
On the wellness program, like what is our history of like participation rate, utilization rate, whatever you want to call it?
Yeah, you might need to move back here.
Do our, yeah, this is probably more of an HR.
I can hear you.
Sorry. But yeah, is it, in other words, and I'm like Clint, I mean, we want to provide great service to our employees and those who need it and so on. And I guess I'm coming from the standpoint, me being under the state system still, getting my insurance through them and so on. We have a wellness program. To me, it's completely bogus. I mean, it does me no good at all. I mean, we have to call four times a year and talk to a wellness coach. That is the most bizarre conversations I, I ever have, four times a year. I mean, they're like, I mean, seriously, that, I, I call and, well, how's it going? Uh, pretty good. Well, what have you done this year? Well, I kept my weight about the same. Oh, well, what are your goals? Uh, well, to keep my weight about the same. Well, what are you doing today? Well, playing basketball and pickleball and, uh, well, do you want to have any other goals? No. I mean, it's just like, what do we, I'm saying that, I guess, for the $56,000 increase or whatever, are, are our employees getting their money's worth? Are, are they using it and is it benefiting them?
When you say using it, we have a Health Fair that's in October, and it's probably our biggest event. Employees love it. We have a lot of different vendors that come. Last year, or probably the last two years, we offered additional tests that we paid some, the employee paid some, but believe it or not, even though employees had to pay some, they still participated. So when you talk about utilization, I probably would say probably anywhere from 350 to 380 employees probably participate. And that's probably a good number. There's probably 10% of the population that does not. We're seeing a lot of our employees, they are able to remain on their parents' insurance. So we probably have about 40 employees that opt out completely. So you're really looking at around 500 employees that would participate. So you're probably seeing about 10% that does not, if that kind of answers your question. And as far as the two criteria, in order to get the wellness credit, they would have to do the biometric screening. And then there's, on the Anthem website, they would go on the website and complete an HRA assessment, which probably takes about 15, 20 minutes. So we won't know this year, the exact numbers, we won't know because we're giving them a longer time to complete it. But I should be able to give you those numbers. But in the past, it's been running probably, there's about 10% that does not participate at all.
What's our feedback from those who participate? I mean, I'm just trying to get it, is it worth it? I mean, is our $50,000 going towards some good use?
Well, a survey was sent out the first of April. They've got until April the 30th, so we don't know what the employees are saying just yet. But as soon as we get the results back, I'm sure that Swede and Jared will come back in with the results of the survey. I don't really know whether we've even gotten an update of how many that has actually participated. Have you gotten that?
I think double from last year. I think Diane, I want to say 150, like a week ago.
Okay.
So Ernie, part of it is the insurance company requires we meet certain criteria with our funds they give us. It's no different than like the CARES Act we talked about. So one of the things is they do require that we do a Wellness Fair. And it's a way to have everyone really take a moment, stop and see where they are in their health. So it is a very great, great program. People see they've improved, they see they're the same. So on that one's really, really good. And answered Clint to you, yes. A couple of years ago, we had lots of different things you had to do and participate in. COVID kind of changed a lot of that and the look of how we go forward with doing programs. And we've gotten feedback on, you know, how do we help each employee of all the different departments? So at this point, having a brand new broker, that is things they have really delved into. And they're, they're continuously coming back with new stuff for us. And Anne, I mean, spent the whole last week, paperwork laid out all over her desk, going through it line by line. So it is a benefit to us as commissioners to know the health of our employees. And I don't mean individually. I don't know what each person's is, but as a collective whole, to know where our employees most need the, the health and staying well. So the Wellness Fair is something, yes, that is. So right now, we only have two requirements for this year and going forward to July 1st. But now that we're coming out of COVID, but how we look forward with these, these different things happening between the broker and HR, they're, they're studying it.
And I trust staff and administration to handle it. Like I said, just my main point, let's don't just say, well, you get the cheaper rate just because. That defeats the whole reason of the integrity of the program.
And I think you're right, Clint. I think that we've got to continue building the program. You know, I think wellness, through my years of employment, the wellness program is probably one of the most difficult areas to start and to keep going. Because employees, they do kind of, they kind of stop. So I know with everybody's working on it and everybody's information and coming forth with different ideas, I'm sure that coming into the new year, it'll probably be different than what we see this year. That's what I anticipate.
Okay, moving on down into the General Administration budget. We have, we have gotten an increase on the Munis Annual Services, Maintenance Services. And that's reflected in the Contractual Services line. We took a small adjustment down in Utilities just to meet where we are in 2021. And the payment to others, we've taken a small adjustment down to meet where we are in 2021. That's offsetting payments for, well, now that I say it, I can't come up with it in my mind, Energy Excise Tax, sorry. So the, the next page, we've got the IT budget. And we, our new IT Director started today. He, he hasn't reviewed this at this point, but I feel like this is a pretty good budget to, to get us started with, especially with the other money that you committed earlier this year for capital projects. This does reflect the new IT Director's salary. And it also takes the line out of the temporary where we moved from having two full-time and a half-time person to having two full-time and a full-time director. And then we've got an adjustment in the Health Insurance and the Social Security line for And then we've got about $1,500 increase for routers, wiring and other repair needs. Those are just small things that we might have to run to Staples and pick up or, or, you know, a, a, a wire gets broken or, you know, just small things that the IT Department has to replace from time to time. A mouse that may break or a keyboard or, there's just a lot of little things that we have to replace when you've got as many computers in place as we do. And, you know, with me being directly involved with this over the last few months, I do see that we, we have a lot of needs in our IT Department. We have kind of pushed the can, kicked the can down the road. And we, we're going to have to put some resources toward upgrading that, that backbone. Y'all already funded a good portion of that, but we may, we may need some additional funding. There's a lot of things that we need to do. And as I was on a bond rating call, two bond rating calls last week with S&amp;P and Moody's. And there were significant questions about our cybersecurity from both of those agencies. Insurance application, again, multiple questions about cybersecurity. So everybody is concerned about cybersecurity. I think with the resources we have, we're doing the best that we can, but we probably need to do a little bit better. And that's going to require some monetary investment going down the road. But I'm not going to be the one to make those recommendations. I'm going to let the IT Director get in place, assess the needs. And then if he feels like there's additional funding needed, I'll let him come back. But I don't think that it will be in the general fund. I think some of it's just going to be a one-time capital purchase as we're going forward. Then there could, there could be like ransomware, virus protection, that kind of stuff. We may have to increase what we're doing there, but I think overall, we've done a pretty good job of, of investing in good products that will keep us safe. Our firewall will seem to be pretty good and we've used good technology like Cisco. So I think going forward, we're, we're in pretty good shape as far as our IT is concerned.
I did get about $550,000, I think, allocated in splosh for capital for IT.
Correct.
Okay. I, I did have three categories. One was cybersecurity and that, good, you, you cover that. I did wonder, does this reflect any, anything to integrate systems or is that a problem? Like I know at the state, and I, I hear from time to time from different departments and that kind of thing, like, well, we use different software than the so-and-so. And especially, I guess, in the area of community development and Tax Commissioner and Tax Assessor's Office and that kind of thing. Are we going to integrate systems at all? Or is that a, a problem at the county where the IT Director now, that we have him in place, would be involved with that?
I think that's something that he's going to have to take a, a specific look at. Within those three departments, I think there can be some integration. We use a product called GMAAS now. And I think that community development and tax, mainly the tax assessor uses that product, but I think community develop weighs in on it some. And then I think information from that is fed over to the Tax Commissioner. The complicated part of this is that you have state mandated software in some areas, like the Tax Commissioner, like the court systems. So you have, you have products out there that you don't have a choice of what to use. You have to use what they tell you to use. And then in other situations, you have all the flexibility in the world. You can go and pick whatever you want and use it however you want. And some of that information does have to feed from one system to another. Now, the, the developers of the GMAAS system work at the state. So they know and understand the state ta, the Tax Commissioner's software very well. So they are able to make integrations and let information flow over to that state system better than possibly in some other areas. But, but I do, our IT Director has the directive from the Chairman to make sure that we're utilizing information flow as best possible. The young man that works at the Sheriff's Department came over and, and just helped us, I mean, no questions asked. He just came in, jumped in, helped us as much as he could. And he's willing to help with getting information flow from the Sheriff's Department into the court systems. So I think there will be some efficiencies gained there. And, you know, we're, we're real lucky. We've got a couple of young guys that are very energetic, very smart, willing to learn, have a lot of knowledge. So I feel like going forward, we, we will be able to do as much data integration as we can.
And speaking of Tax Assessor's Office, we did fund, you know, I guess, the ability for them to go out in the field and use.
Yeah, that mobile, mobile assessor.
Yeah, right. So in the IT Department, would this give sufficient funds or to just reflect them helping train or augment the Tax Assessor's Office as far as if they run into complications and, and hire new staff or need some additional assistance, you know, that?
Well, that, the mobile assessor product actually offered the training. So our assessors went to, I don't know that they went, but they got, I think it was online training, but they were, they were given online training of how to use that system. And the, the, the use of the software would be the responsibility of the Chief Appraiser in making sure that his people get the training that they need. But our people, our IT staff is supporting the hardware and making sure that that software works correctly with our hardware, making sure that we get the correct hardware. So.
Good.
So far, it seems like that system's working well. It runs on an iPad and it seems like it's, it's, they're, they're able to do what they need it to do.
Yeah. I think all these things are bigger tasks that I'm sure the Chairman has probably tasked the new Director with, that we've talked about on this board, is having someone in that seat that's not having to run out every two seconds to fix a screen or, you know, tighten a bolt or whatever, that can kind of, I'm not saying they're always going to be in the office, but can sit down and put the battle plan, so to speak. So hopefully after he's had an opportunity to be in his seat for a while, maybe the Chairman, I'm sure will allow him to bring some stuff that we can all grasp, because those were some of the original ideas of why we wanted to have the position to begin with, is this bigger umbrella approach instead of attacking everything just because you have a service call or a ticket that's put in.
Right. I, I think he'll be much more proactive rather than reactive and hopefully have the manpower to reactively while he can be proactive.
Good.
Well, I, I just want to make sure that we don't skimp on cyberware or ransomware because this morning's news was covered with an unfriendly government that's particularly targeting health and government entities and particularly small governments. And I think that's, we kind of fall into that because I think they saw that as a target-rich environment because a lot of the smaller places don't use the ransom, the cyberware and ransomware that they should be using, so.
One thing I'll add to, to that very topic is, and Michelle, you may have been the one that sent this out, the gentleman, wasn't it, from Southwire that was maybe their head person, did a couple of different satellite meetings and he held one in Villarica. And I know that Chris and Joel at the time came up. And I was very pleased to hear a lot of the things that he was suggesting that people needed to immediately do. There was a lot of companies in the room that hadn't done it. But I had learned from Chris and Joel, many of the things that the gentleman was going over, we were already doing. Now, not to say we don't need to do more, but I had some level of assurance that there were a lot of things being addressed on that particular point that we wouldn't otherwise know had I not been in that meeting. So I'm not saying we can't be hit by it, but I was very encouraged by Chris and Joel at the time's information and, and, you know, what was presented in the meeting, so.
Yeah. Well, our broker, J. Smith Lanier, sends things regularly, too. There is who, you know, insures us on this sort of thing. So they're constantly making sure that we are getting the education we need and well aware of what we need to be doing. So there, there's a lot of people looking after us.
But there's a lot of smart, crooked people out there.
Yeah, that's true.
That are constantly trying to outsmart you. And so hopefully, we won up them. But I, I agree with you, Commissioner Chance, with the, the prior staff has done a really good job of putting us in a position of, of being safe. And I, I think the products that they have put in place are, are good. And, but we have to continue to update those and keep them current because if you don't, one little, one little slip in an update could be that opportunity that that unfriendly person's looking for.
One more question in this, as far as rock quarry litigation, we kind of skipped over the, the attorney's fees, but do we anticipate a good bit more on that this next year or is that not?
We would anticipate costs associated with that as we've discussed with the Board before because we are currently defending the original lawsuit that was filed and the, let's see, the plaintiff has filed a second lawsuit to appeal the Board of Appeals decision. So we have two lawsuits now that we're currently defending. So there will be, we anticipate some costs associated with that going forward, and I believe that's in the budget.
Okay.
It's a real advantage for the section.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to that in just a minute. And I'll, I'll, I'll show you where that is when we get there. So if we want to move on to Department 1545, which is the Tax Commissioner, we, we have put in a dollar an hour increase for all the employees there. And the Tax Commissioner asked for two new positions. That office up there continues to get busier and busier and busier. And she is doing everything that she can to, to try to accommodate the needs of the constituents as quickly as she can. As we looked at this, the goal would be to fund those two positions, but to try, to try to get to where we, we needed to be at the end of the day and offer a balanced budget, we were able to fund one of the additional positions. So as we, as we look at this going forward, you know, that's something we need to keep in the back of our mind, that, that, you know, maybe next year, we can fund that next position. You know, I don't know if we can do it next year or not, but I think we need to keep that in our mind, that that's a, that's a need that she has. And I know, I, I personally usually go up there and pay my taxes, write a check for it and hand it to them. And there's always a line. So I, I know there's a need there. But that, other than, other than some postage, that was the only thing that she requested. So that's a pretty easy one there.
And there again, I met with each department head and each elected official prior to y'all seeing this. It was a draft that I went through with them, explained what I was and wasn't able to put in. And they've all been extremely gracious on understanding where we want to go because even the Tax Commissioner would like to see a dollar an hour raised for the current employee she has. So very gracious, but if we find ourselves with extra funds, we definitely need to consider this, this position.
And one thing that some people, if they're viewing it, may say, well, what about the technology side? But I do think she has, there's a lot of things you can do online that she's made accessible. Maybe even improve some of the kiosk, you know, when you come in, you know, categorizing what it is that you need. And I'm like you, I'm not over there that often, but whenever I go, they are just slammed with people. So I think that shows you the exponential growth. It's not that we're not trying to provide technology enhancements because I think some of that is there. It's just either you have those people that choose not to do it, or maybe they don't have access to do the things that they need. And then there's some things that you can't do online. You have to come in and show and prove in person. So anyone, I guess, that's listening thinking, well, are you not trying to do something on the technology side? I think, I think she is.
Oh, yeah. And, and the state's pushed down some things that it's, as far as the titles that used to be handled at the state level, they've pushed it back down to the county level. And, you know, that, they expect us to provide that service now. They didn't push us any funding down to pay for that, but they.
That's, that's, that's everything. Every mandate, they push it on us and then no money.
That's right.
And then they turn around and ask for what they want.
What, what is this sporadic question? Over the last one year, two years, do we, anybody know what the county population increase has been overall?
We've not received a census information to date.
Yeah. I mean, I know we're growing. I just.
Yeah, I, I think we're, I mean, based on estimates that I've seen, it looks like we're, we're growing by 1,000 to 1,500 people per year. So I think when I came here, we were estimated to be at about 116. And I think this year, we're estimated to be at about 120,000 people. So, so, yeah, we're growing. We've got an increase in the number of parcels because there's more property that's being split down, even if it's, even if it's not subdivided, you're seeing farms broken down into four-acre tracts and homes being built on that. So. So there's definitely an increase in the level of service that we're expecting to give as, as a county. Okay, let's move on to the tax assessor. We, we have the dollar an hour increase that, that's across the board. The Board of Assessors met and the chairman of the Board of Assessors and the chief appraiser came and met with HR, me and the chairman on Friday. And they had requested in their budget request that we, that we give an additional dollar an hour to everyone in the tax assessor's department except for the chief assessor and the assistant chief assessor. Their idea is that they are having an issue with retention. Their starting pay in their department is lower than someone starting at solid waste. And they, they are required to have training by the state, they're required to have training and they're required to pass exams. So, you know, they're losing people to other counties and they're losing to other departments within, in the county. And part of their solution to this was to add that extra dollar an hour to try to incentivize their employees to stay where they were. They did some salary comparisons and outside of comparing to Herd and Harrelson County, we're, you know, anywhere from two to four dollars an hour less than Paul and Douglas and Caeda. And I think Terran said that even in Meriwether, they've, they've had to increase their minimum that they're paying to try to retain people. And I'm, I'm guessing that Meriwether is very similar to Carroll in that you've got larger counties in close proximity with higher tax digest that are willing to pay more.
Absolutely. And we've gone through, you know, because there is a lot to add to this, the training and the costs for the, you know, schools and testing. And we've lost three or four positions. And what they do is they come in, they get trained and then they get offers, you know, I think one person went to Fayette County and others. And so just within the last couple of weeks, we have increased and jumped our starting salary to be able to attract. And then we also have a block where where they achieve the appraiser one, appraiser two, et cetera, we also give a raise at that point as well. But we've, we've had to just, like I say, within the last couple of weeks, increase that because we're just continuously losing, you know, those appraisers. And I think there's a shortage across the state right now and, you know, so it's a, it's a pretty high demand position.
So are we adjusting the pay scale with this as well of what's being offered? So in other words, if we have a gap from 12 to 18 dollars, are we now going from 12 to 19? In other words, I understand the people that are already employed, but if we're trying to attract and someone new comes in, how would that additional dollar be applied? Would it just be applied in, in making the, the spectrum broader?
You might just need to stay there.
I think, I think our, is that we're going to move the pay scale a dollar. So the entry level, job rate, all the way across will increase by one dollar. I think what the tax, what they want to do for the tax assessor, they would move a dollar on their hourly rate of pay, but they're asking for an additional dollar for those existing employees except for the chief appraiser and the assistant chief appraiser.
So in the pay scale, we're, we're only adjusting from half of what's in the budget, not twice? Is that what I'm hearing you, in other words?
Yes. So we would move that minimum pay from 12 to 13 and the maximum from 18 to 19 in your example.
And I'm assuming that, that the board that we appoint, have they formally voted or formally asked this beyond just the staff? I mean, I know that-
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
So the chief, the chairman of the Board of Assessors came to and me and Michelle on Friday and formally requested this is from, from the board.
Okay. And I'm not saying the board wouldn't want it, but that was where I was going with this.
Right.
Is that I think there's a little more weight in the fact that we have an appointed board that we're asking to govern because they technically don't report to us. I mean, that's by design, so-
That's correct. Yeah, they're not supposed to, they're supposed to be autonomous.
Right.
And I believe I have that in writing too that I can give to you.
No, I just wanted to clarify that for the record. Thank you.
Thank you.
I, for the record, I would just like to say, all of you know and the county in general knows, I guess, last year I was down and hard on intentionally so the, the tax assessor's office, but I'll give credit where credit's due. And I will say that I am impressed and glad for the changes that have been made at the tax assessor's office. And I am for supporting them and having them continue to move forward. I think they've made great strides. Hubert Sparks has probably been the, the most beneficial catalyst over there for that and, and I'm, I'm for supporting them. With, with that, I know that they're about in a crisis situation with their staffing and, and I'm glad to hear that, that they've met with, with y'all. One of the things, is, is this giving them enough then that, that they are, the board and Hubert is satisfied that they can bring someone in because they're losing some experienced staff too and, and probably rightly so? When, when management changes brings in more expectations, some people are going to leave and that's a good thing for the county and our residents probably. But, and Hubert is, is great with customer service and, and understands that. I've had several conversations with him and I like his customer service approach. I've had some complaints. I go to him and he says, I want to know about that before it gets out of my office. I want to talk with the tax ass, the taxpayer directly and, and I really like that. But having said that, I know there, there's a lot of training, as you say, and, and we need to ensure that, that they get enough funding in order to bring in maybe not somebody just at the starting pay, the, the lowest tax assessor one, but if they've lost a, a tax assessor two or three position, does this give them sufficient funds to bring in the, the experienced staff if they need to?
The other thing, Ernie, that we talked about on Friday, the appraiser one comes in as a six and appraiser two as a seven. And I'm talking going vertical, six, seven, eight. The other thing that we talked about was moving the appraiser one, which is a six, moving them to a seven. The appraiser two to an eight, appraiser three to a nine, and appraiser four to a 10. That way it will increase that entry level and job rate because right now the entry level of an appraiser one, I believe, is a little over 14 dollars. And we posted a couple of weeks ago, I think we had, we had maybe five people. We were going to interview three, one of them backed out and we interviewed two. And our entry level, and we feel that they need to start as a trainee because they're coming in the door as with no experience at all. But when you're bringing a trainee in at all over 13 dollars an hour, you're not going to retain those people. So we talked about moving the one through four, increase by one grade so that the entry level will be a little bit higher. And then of course if we move the, the pay scale a dollar across all the levels, and this is a whole pay scale, not just the tax assessor, but adding a dollar, that would increase it even more. So we feel that that area, they have the ability to go from a one, two, three and four through certifications, but it's not just like coming in the door and being able. They are having to study, go off to school, take a test. So there's a lot involved. So that was another thing that we were talking about doing just so that we could try to get people even interested in applying.
The, the chief appraiser and the, the board chairman did feel like this would be enough to, let's say, stop the bleed. There may be additional needs in the future, but at this time they felt like that was enough to at least get them some sta, some good quality staffing. And then we may have to take a look at this again down the road, but at, at least at this point, it gets them close.
Another thing that I want us to look at when we talk about this pay is our health benefits package. And I think we need, and you probably got that information, Anne, but let's say if we're comparing institutions from 500 employees and above, maybe we rank in the top 20% of the richness of our health benefit program. No one would go to work somewhere by saying, you'll get a paycheck and they say, okay, I'll come to work and not know what that is. But as humans, we typically do that with insurance, right? We say, oh, we've got insurance, so that's a great benefit and it is, but it could be a really lousy insurance policy or it could be one like what we have where it's maybe rich and, and on the health side. So I'd like to see us do that to make sure that we're promoting what is the value in that in some type of, of percentage scale. Because we can't just look at the dollar amount and say, but by the way, we've got insurance. I mean, I have friends of mine that have insurance with large corporations and they say it's absolutely terrible. And I tell them about some of the benefits we have at the county and they said, wow, I wish I had that. So we need to ensure that we're putting the emphasis on, on the value of that when we're interviewing people for a job, not just we offer insurance.
Retired benefits as well, is another important aspect. Retired benefits wants to be pushed as well. A lot of, a lot of places you go, they'll, they'll reflect that in what it's actually worth per hour. So I mean, you may be getting a, say you're getting paid 19 dollars an hour, by the time you put all that package together, they're making 27 or 28 dollars an hour.
And we do do a cost analysis. We have a benefit analysis sheet that we do. And actually, one of the people who interviewed was coming from Harrelson County and he could not even cover his spouse because it was so expensive. So that is a big plus and I don't think we talk enough about what we do as far as the benefits that we do offer because that is a big part of it.
And, and given the training, this is an office where, I mean, retention is key.
Exactly.
Because you, you train somebody and they become a tax assessor two or three and, and they leave and you've got a, a lot of training to recoup.
And you know, there's some people that come in the door and they'll become a one or a two and they may not want to go any further. You know, it's the same way as your firefighters. They may come in the door as a firefighter, they have the ability to become a firefighter one or two, an EMT, a paramedic. They may want to come in the door and just stay exactly where they are. So we do have, in those two departments, they do have the benefit to go a little bit higher if they choose to do so.
So moving, moving on through the tax assessor's request, we did put in those mobile assessor units and we need an additional $3,000 a year to pay for the service, the mobile service through Verizon on those. And then on our maintenance fee, there is the mobile assessor maintenance that we will have to pay each year on that. And they had requested $5,000 for computer furniture and equipment. We feel like there's going to be some excess funds at the end of the year, so we would like to take that out and actually work through that at the end of the year and free up some of this budget money. Moving over to our risk management, we have had, again, another high loss year in, in our, in our insurance. And we've had a couple of pretty significant situations. We've had, as far as claims numbers, we've had a high number of claims, again, in automobile. And then additionally, we've had some high dollar amounts in, in that area. So we're looking, we don't have any firm numbers. J. Smith-Lenear's working on it, they're getting quotes, they've got multiple quotes out there. We talked back and forth to, to try to decide what a, what a good number would be. And, and that's hard to put a finger on, but we projected it at, at about a 30% increase. So these numbers that you see here are, are reflective of that. On the bonds, the probate judge actually went through the state statutes to see who should be bonded. And all of you as board members should have been bonded in the past and want. So we've acquired those bonds. We had to get some additional bonding for a, a, at least one judge. So that's the increase in the $10,000 there is the additional bonds that we need. The next line, contractual services, that's where you're seeing the, the expenses for the quarry that we were talking about a few minutes ago. In, in the past, we, we've put litigation that was outside of the normal realm that's fallen into this risk management line. So that's where we allocated it this time to be consistent with historical. Last year, we increased our deductible on our liability and auto insurance to $25,000. I've increased that line by 75,000 just to cover additional deductibles that are out there. If we don't have any claims, we won't utilize that line item, but history shows that we probably will. In the contingency line item, the chairman had asked for 150,000 in contingency. With all of the requests that we had in the budget, we've had to cut that to 68,500. We still feel like that's a, a workable number, but it doesn't allow for a lot of flexibility. So that could mean that we may have to come back to the board and request additional funds if, if we had to through the coming year. So we've got, this is one of the biggest areas of increase in our budget, 499, 514, increasing our risk management budget.
I wanted to add something. I was contacted by J. Smith-Lenear on the property side and went by and met with them for a little over two hours, a couple of weeks ago. And we talked in depth about, you know, the insurance and the claims and the things that we were seeing. And one of the things that was brought up as I asked different questions is what else can we do? I think there are some additional trainings that we make and offer that are more specialized that we maybe have not tapped into in the past. A couple of the things, I'll just go in for it. One of the things we talked about was cameras, for instance, maybe on the fire trucks. Spoken with the, the fire chief about this, talked with legal counsel some just generically. I'm not saying that's the route we're going, but when you look at things from a percentage wise claims, when you look in the industry, a lot of these different things that have been implemented have been shown over time, I believe, to help show where we're in the right, if you will, during an accident or something. Well, before you're just kind of going off, well, did anyone see it or he said or she said? And so the areas that maybe shows that we're at fault for something, the insurance company knows that this is something we need to get out from under versus if we're, you know, completely innocent in something, we've got some additional evidence that we can apply. Just to give you one example, and I'm not saying this is something that would apply to Carroll County, we wouldn't want to do, but the trucking industry, they have cameras that they can actually point to the driver. And I'm not saying we would have that here, but it knows how many times you blink. And, and there's a, a formula and so it can, it can notify dispatch, we believe this driver is getting sleepy based off the number of blinks and how long it takes and the intervals of the blinks. And so they believe they've cut down on accidents from truckers, you know, saying, okay, we're going to alert them that we're going to require them to pull off of the road. So that doesn't happen in this instance, but the point is there's technology out there that I think industry-wise that has been driven has shown to bring down premiums from the cost from, from liability claims. So I'm not insinuating we need to do cameras today. I'm just saying based off some of the conversations, I think there is more that we can do. I think there is more already available to us. One of the things that we talked about, I think he went over and said that we were at like a 90% loss ratio- at like a ninety percent loss ratio on the auto side, and I think we're only at a thirteen percent on the facility side, which is a really good number. And I said, "Well, can we bring that down even lower?" He said, "Well, are we doing, you know, checking fire extinguishers? Do we have people regularly checking this and that?" And I said, "Well, I don't run day-to-day operations like the chairman, but I know that we have someone in public works that does that." And he said, "Well, if I had that information of something that's regularly done, I can put that in our file, and when I go out to bid, that would be something additional that they would look and say, 'Wow, these people are, they've got a low ratio, but they're doing X, Y, and Z' to even try to bring that down even lower.'" So I think there's some things that we need to take some responsibility on our side to make sure that we're implementing within reason before we just necessarily say, "Hey, these are coming in too high, these return rates." So I hope that administrative or staff-wise that we will look into some of that, because I was very enlightened from the conversation that I think there are a lot more that we can do on our end to try to lower these costs.
Yeah, we did implement some training last year, and so that was kind of the level-one implementation. So as we move forward, we will continue to implement training. I think that's important. And one thing we do experience, like in fire, we may not be at fault in a wreck, but a fire truck, a minimum damage, I think we had a fire truck up at Sand Hill that got wrecked, and it wasn't our fault. It cost forty thousand dollars of damage to the fire truck.
Real quick.
Well, the insured had a twenty-five thousand dollar maximum on their coverage. So it wasn't our fault, but we had fifteen thousand dollars of exposure because the other person didn't have enough insurance. And it wasn't even a bad wreck. I mean, it was, I mean, these fire trucks are unbelievable how much it costs to fix things that just seem like a scratch. I mean, it gets expensive quick. So the county does have a lot of exposure. And, you know, I think Commissioner Chance and I talked about building the new fire station and maybe having a smaller response unit out of that fire station where you don't have that multimillion-dollar fire truck rolling every time you have a call. And, you know, that smaller truck's sixty, seventy-five thousand dollars instead of a million-dollar piece of equipment rolling every time. So those are some things down the road, too, that we can look at reducing our exposure just through the equipment that we utilize. Of course, we want to give our people the resources and the equipment that they need, but if they can utilize something that's less expensive and more maneuverable, then I think that's something that we should look at doing.
Chairman, let me ask, do we not have any type of telematics on those trucks on any of our vehicles? I mean, you know, as doing my job, I mean, you know, telematics change the driver behavior immediately. I mean, the next day, you know.
I don't know about the fire trucks. You know, the deputy cars definitely, they already have cameras in them. Most, all vehicles at this point have onboard computers. Now, whether we can access that and look at it or whether it's good, I don't think that we're getting direct feedback from that, no. And I think that's what you're talking about, right? Something that you can look at. If you've got a bus going down the road right now, you can pull it up and look at it and see how fast it's going, whether it breaks too hard or...
Right, right. And the camera over the top of the driver.
Yeah.
So the training doesn't stop with just the training, the training is ongoing on a regular basis because you can literally look into that vehicle. You know, whether you have it to where you can look into it while it's moving, because it's extremely expensive when you do it like that. But the ability to even pull the hard drive or whatever, or download stuff once it comes back on, again, when you put telematics on vehicles, it changes driver behavior, because now they know somebody's paying attention.
Right.
And like I tell my drivers, it's not that I'm sitting in my office trying to catch somebody, but you are in a rolling billboard.
Yep.
Going down the street.
Yeah.
I mean, that's just what it is. I mean, and if anything goes wrong, you don't have to have call me and a phone number on the back, they're going to know who called, you know.
Correct.
So it just, it just changes the behavior of what's going on, makes people more careful when they're on the road, because people can become complacent when they're just used to jumping in the vehicle and going or doing a routine thing. They become complacent behind the wheel, and that's the place you can't become complacent. You've got to, you have to keep an edge to what you're doing on a regular basis.
That's good, thanks, Montreal. I was sitting here wondering about, well, from the school transportation standpoint, what's up with that? What do you do? So that's great. I also met with Jay Smith-Lenier, and the one category, they, I forget what the terminology is, but they showed risk numbers or something, and our risk numbers were all okay or better, but when it came to that auto accident thing, it was, I mean, it was like six times greater than what it should be to get a decent rate. And we have, I mean, we've just got to do something about that. I mean, it just seems like, I mean, for, you know, the recent incident where sheriff cars got involved with, again, these scumbags, I mean, that's understandable. I mean, we can't do anything about that, that's fine, but these other things, it seems like there's a lot that maybe could be done to reduce our exposure there. I did talk to Matt Brass and so on, because getting my personal auto insurance bill every year goes up, and it's like, I have one of the best histories you can get, but it still goes up, and I'm like, "What the world is going on?" I mean, my cars are depreciating, I drive a 2007 vehicle, for Pete's sake, and it's like, "What's going on here?" And they said that, you know, tort reform, the trial attorneys associations are strong in Georgia, and we've got the fifth or sixth highest rate in the nation here in Georgia, but we can't do a dagum thing about it because the trial attorneys association, no, but they, you know, they have such a lobby that we can't go against them and reduce the rates. I think that's terrible. I mean, we as a county, I guess, can't do anything about it, but on a global overall view, that's some of it. And then we can get into how our drivers are performing and what we need to do there. But, yeah, thirty percent increase, mine isn't going up thirty percent, so I do think there's a lot that...
But yours is going up with no incidents.
Exactly. That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And it's going up, you know, maybe ten percent or something, it's like, but that's part of that, that tort reform thing, but...
Montreal, thank you for bringing that up. I mean, we do it in our own model company, we do it with our kids. So could I ask you to get with Chief Paget, y'all discuss it? There may be, you know, other companies that better serve fire, but since you do run a fleet, would you mind meeting with him? And I know probably what it'll do is it'll change our budget whenever we implement, because you can purchase the equipment out of Swast, but then the monthly fee, whatever. So do you mind if I ask you to get with Chief Paget and come back with us at some point with some ideas?
Sure.
Thank you. I wish I'd thought of that myself, but I'm glad to have you.
Like them, I was in a meeting with them, too, and we were talking about that, you know. And I'm constantly bringing in people to train, and I'm constantly doing, I call them a Monday morning meeting, we're talking every day, and it seems like it's on repeat a lot, but I'm like, "Oh, well, you need to hear it, because, again, behind the wheel, I just need you to keep an edge behind the wheel." You can't drive big vehicles, small cars want to pass it, period. When they see it come down the road, they hit the gas to get in front of it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and I have cameras on the side of my bus, and I am amazed when I look at video where on purpose, you've got kids on the side of the road, and a car just sees that bus and just takes off. And I'm like, "What is going on?" But it's because it's a big vehicle. You know, when I pulled my camper, it was the same way. They see that camper behind my truck, and they hit the gas.
Mm-hmm.
And they don't care.
Mm-hmm.
So we have to drive for them, you know, we have to be safe and think about what's going on around us.
And part of this is going to be out of our hands, because I've got a CDL. All gear drivers have a CDL, and my, one of my sons has a CDL. And if you get involved in an accident, the first thing they're going to do is they're going to lawyers for the other, whoever gets hurt or whatever, they're going to try to find out what was that driver doing. And even though it may not be the driver's fault, if we've got cameras that are looking at a driver, then we can say, "Well, look, here's what the driver was doing." Because they'll start picking things apart, and if they can find anything that that CDL driver was doing that may not even violate the law, but he's blinking too many times, then it's going to be in your hands to try to prove that he was doing what he was supposed to do, because they see county on the side of a vehicle and a CDL driver, and they're going to do everything they can to put that driver at fault.
Especially if it's shiny and red.
Yeah, that's right. So putting cameras in the cockpit of that fire truck might not be a bad idea, because I drove a school bus for a while, and we were on camera all the time.
Well, and telemetrics, too. I mean, that tells you when they're braking too hard, accelerating too fast. I mean, it, you know, it'll tell you, and that, like you said, that's good training oper- you know, you bring the driver in, you say, "Look, in a non-emergency situation, this is what happened in, that it, the correct response to that situation."
And I will say this, driving a fire truck's a whole lot different from driving a school bus.
Absolutely.
None of it's any good unless somebody monitors it and watches it.
That's correct. That's absolutely right. All right? We want to move into the court system. We got first up Superior Court. Judge Simpson, outside of his kind of redoing the courtrooms, he asked for some additional money for jury trials. Like I said, next week, we have the first jury trial in over a year, and so he's asked for an increase in bailiffs' pay, court reporter fees, and per diem for jurors to help with getting these jury trials off the ground and getting them moving more quickly. And he feels like with the backlog that we have, that we're going to have to do more jury trials this year than we've probably ever done in history, just to try to get the court system moving like it needs to.
Maybe we can get them working full weeks. Be unusual, but maybe.
Did this, Alicia, Herb Cranford, does this reflect some of his?
No, that's Superior Court operations only. We'll move on, the district attorney will come up later.
All right.
The next is the clerk of court. We've got the dollar an hour increase there, a small increase for telephone, and an increase for office supplies. Our traffic unit in the sheriff's office must be doing a tremendous job. Last year, we had seven thousand seven hundred and three cases, and based on January, February numbers, we're on track to do over eighteen thousand cases from the sheriff's office in traffic court. So, and we have seen an increase in fines. So the task force that the sheriff put together is doing their job out there on the roads.
Well, I just want to say, I couldn't, I get complaints all the time, and it's, that's all the time. Bar Gold Mine Road, Pleasant Ridge Road, Lowell Road, I mean, it just goes on and on. Ernie, can you do something? We have so many speeders on this road and so... And I've talked to some of the other district commissioners, too, and they're like, "Yeah, I get the same thing." And I have a tremendous response from the traffic unit of the sheriff's office, and they're right on it, and they get out there, and I get calls back from the same constituent saying, "Appreciate this, I'm seeing more traffic control out here and so on." But it just seems like people are speeding like, not five miles an hour, but like fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, just all the time.
It's a danger to public safety.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, there's, they have one on Carlton-Tyes Road, and if you've ever driven that road, it's fairly dangerous, and there's some serious curves, ninety miles an hour.
Goodness.
That is way too fast.
I had one constituent call me, lives just out of Rootville on the left as you're going out toward Tyus on Highway Five, and he said, "Living on the left, when they come out of Rootville, they put their blinker on to turn in their own driveway, and several times, folks would just ram by them and just about got in an accident while they're turning left, they're trying to pass." And it's like, it just seems like a chronic problem of folks going excessively fast.
It is.
Yeah. But kudos to the sheriff's office for addressing it, they're great.
So next up is the district attorney. He asked for a total of increase in his budget of a hundred and forty-seven thousand one eighty-six. We did give you a separate sheet for the district attorney with all of his requests. And in reviewing this, the chairman did feel that we needed to increase their budget. We couldn't find enough money to fund all of his requests, but we did give him an additional sixty thousand dollars.
And I guess you're getting to that, but so what are we not funding in their request?
Well, we didn't actually select what we were funding, we just said that we would give him an additional sixty thousand, and he can make a determination on where he felt that that money was best spent.
Would that amount, would it hire a new employee with benefits?
It would hire an additional investigator with benefits if that's where he elected to spend that money. So that was kind of the thought process, is that he could, he could hire another person with benefits. Now, he can elect to put it wherever he wants, but that was kind of our thought process.
Maybe you're in, but looking at Mr. Cranford's letter, I'm just trying to sync that with the budget lines. And like the total request, one point two six million, I can't jive this letter with the budget sheet, so if you could help me with that.
Well, I'm not a hundred percent sure that I can, because the way they request things are different than the way they bill things, and the budget's set up based on how they submit their invoice to us.
Mm-hmm.
And he typically asks, he and the public defender both ask for things a little different than the way their invoice comes to us. So that's why I kind of, I didn't want to put a line on here, I just put it into the salary line and then allow him to fund whatever he thinks is most necessary in his department.
Okay. Because he was talking about an increase of a hundred and forty-six thousand for a total personnel budget of one point one nine nine. And he says that would bring it to ten dollars per Carroll County resident compared to some benchmarks of, Troop County's thirteen sixty-two per person, Coweta County says six eighty per person. He wants to go to like about ten dollars per Carroll County resident to one point one nine nine.
So what I would include in the personnel would be starting at salaries.
Yeah.
And going down through workers' compensation.
With the comp.
And I did not bring a calculator, so I can't quite do all that math in my head real quick.
Alicia, it looks like you pulled eighty-seven, a little over eighty-seven thousand dollars out of his budget, so we're just going to say, "Here it is."
Out of his increase?
You can divide it, yes, you can divide it up how you want to.
Yes, that, that's the way we did it. Now, to try to tie it back to what Commissioner Reynolds is talking about, you would add these, you know, the salary and supplement and the insurance and social security and retirement and workers' comp, and I don't know, I don't know what that comes to compared to the million one ninety-nine.
I think what we...
Nine hundred and fifty, sorry.
I think what would be appropriate is, I know we haven't gotten to the public defender yet, but I know sometimes they're in sync or harmony, not necessarily dollar for dollar, but a lot of their, you know, have to coincide with what they're doing with one another. It may be an opportunity, but after the meeting, we would just need to speak with them, both of them... we would just need to speak with them, both of those entities, and see, do they think they can comparatively move forward with what we are offering in the adjust in the revenue? And then kind of work from there. I don't know that we're going to find an exaction just looking at 60 grand in the moment until we can take that number and then speak with them afterwards. That's just me.
Well, what we looked at is that the district attorney has had an increase in their budget more recently than the public defender. And so we did put more money in the public defender's budget to try to catch them up with what we had done with the district attorney in the past and give them a little bit for this time, too. I think their total budget is still less than.
$55,000 less, public defender's $55,000 less than the district attorney.
Yeah, so the public defender's still.
And I'm not huge on thinking those numbers have to be exact. Everybody that, you know, comes before you doesn't need a public defender just because they're being prosecuted. So I've never been a big fan of it has to be dollar for dollar. But I do think within reason, when you look at statistics and the numbers, if we're going to adjust and give more manpower to one, can the other keep up within some type of percentage compare, you know? But I'm not a huge proponent of they need to be exactly the same because every case is different, everyone doesn't require a public defender, so.
And there's some things I think that the district attorney has accessible to them, like some confiscated funds and stuff that they can utilize within their budget that the public defender doesn't have access to. And I'm not an expert in this by any means. This whole thing is kind of more than I can consume. I really haven't gotten into the nuts and bolts of the district attorney and the public defender. I know Commissioner Chance, you've spent a lot of time in both areas and you probably know a lot more about it than I do. But, you know, you want something that's pretty close, I think. I'm in agreement with you. I don't think it has to be an exact dollar amount. But, you know, I don't think you can constantly give the district attorney more funding and not give the public defender anything. So, and then there were some things about the public defender's rent and their building that changed this year, too. So we'll get into that as we move through that. But, you know, Commissioner Reynolds, I'm not exactly sure how all these numbers tie together. He puts together a very eloquent breakout of his expenses and how he comes to his numbers. And, you know, I know they've got a tremendous caseload on them. They've got more work on them since we had a jury trial. They're going to have to bring, they're going to have to bring these cases to trial this year. So I know that there's going to be a lot more required from the district attorney's office and the public defender's office. But I also know that we've got a limited amount of funds to deal with. So we're, you know, we're trying to make the most of every dollar we've got.
And I think we need to keep in consideration that Mr. Cranford tried to get the circuit split. He felt like there was too much of a load based off, and that was turned down. And I'm not saying right, wrong, or indifferent. But I'm just saying some of this has, you know, mastasized over time. And we're going to try to deal with it as we can. We can't fix, you know, that big of a need in one year, so.
That's right.
And his deeds also spread over four additional counties that have to come into play with it.
If his benchmarks are correct, yeah, I mean, and I assume they are. You know, the request to $10 per resident versus the other benchmarks doesn't, off the surface of these, it doesn't seem unreasonable to me with Troop County at 13 something. So I wouldn't, like, the district attorney, to me, takes the bad people off the street and the public defender defends them and tries to ensure they get a fair trial. And that's good and puts them back on the street. I mean, if we had to choose between the two, I'd like to say, well, we certainly have a terrific backlog and I know we do. And I'd like to see us, I guess, fund the district attorney enough so that we can process things as we should and get out of a backlog situation.
Well, I think the district attorney would take as much or more than, whatever we're willing to give, I think they're willing to take. So I think them and the public defender both are, actually.
So are we going to revisit this?
I was only speaking for myself that I feel like a conversation, I've spoken with Mr. Cranford some months ago, read the information that he had sent us via email. But I would just like to have a frank conversation now that we know what the chairman is trying to put in that we think we can afford and just see, hey, if he says, well, if I had $64,500, I could make a leap and bound, but I can't at 60, well, then maybe you come back and try to adjust it. But I don't know what that is by just having a flat, flat amount there. And I'm not saying that that might be all we can afford. But I just want to hear it from him and working with the public defender as well, how they see.
He offered to come, again, he was very gracious when I explained to him that my goal this year was to fund the county employees first and foremost. So he understood that concept because, again, he's having to work with his own employees. So he was very gracious, like the tax commissioner, and understanding where I wanted to go this particular year. So, yes, if we had extra money, he would surely like to have it put in his budget. So he is more than welcome to come. I just didn't want to waste his time because part of this is if you want to fund him the money I did not put in, you've got to tell me what line you want to take it out of. Who do you want to take it away from?
Have the conversation to explain, hey, this is kind of what we have. I know the history of dealing with it, everybody asks for, you know, they want this up here, but they understand that they can live here. So that may be.
And I think the differentiation here is, for instance, the tax commissioner. The tax commissioner asked for two employees and we said, we're going to fund one. And the differentiation here is they have asked for several things from a total dollar amount. And we're saying, we're just going to give you a dollar amount. But the dollar amount does not necessarily match up with one specific item. I'm not saying right, wrong, or indifferent. But that's the differentiation in what's being presented here versus like the tax commissioner. You understand what that exact, what you're funding and what the exact output's going to be. It's one new employee. We don't know what that is with the 60 grand. It's just a dollar figure.
Right, absolutely. And if he feels $60,000 is sufficient, I mean, that would be good. I'm not in his, the last section of his request is, it would allow me to hire an additional assistant DA at $60,000 per year. But there's so many other things that he feels he needs. And I just know cases, I mean, with my son working in Coweta County, I mean, the cases are just months and months behind. And that just seems somewhat ludicrous to me. And I know it's not our responsibility to fund everything, but still, with that amount of backlog and this, somebody has to give, I think.
And non-jury trials have moved along. I mean, they've had Zoom meetings. And I think the thing that you run into without jury trials, a lot of these accused are not willing to negotiate because they don't feel like they're going to come before a jury and they don't think that, they think they may have an easier way out. But once you start having the jury trials, then a lot of the people who haven't been willing to negotiate in the past become more willing to negotiate once they realize that there is a chance that they're going to go before their peers and answer for what they've done or have been accused of. All right, let's move on to state court. We've got an increase of 2% for the state court judge. That was through the state of Georgia. And then she hired an assistant with an increase beyond what the other assistant was making. We've adjusted social security and retirement for the salary increases. The court reporter fees, we weren't real sure on where to go with that. And Theron has graciously helped us with that to a degree. He went back and looked at what Coweta's done in the past in state court. And they look like, on average, they've spent about $83,500 on court reporter fees, and they have two state court judges. Meriwether is on track to spend about $21,000 for this year. We, it looks to me like we need to increase hours. We definitely need to increase hours. The state court judge wants an increase. She and I have not talked specifically about this amount. I emailed her earlier today and told her, or asked her, would $45,000 a year work? Now, that would be an additional $35,000 that the chairman had not planned on in this budget. So that we would have to find another line item to cut if we do the $35,000 increase. But I think that we do have to have this increase. We've used recording equipment in the past with the other state court judge, but it's come into question as to whether that was the proper method of handling the court reporting process. There are some times that you can use recording equipment and there's other times where you need a court reporter. And the current judge feels like that there should be a court reporter on hand more than there has been in the past. So that's why she's making this request.
Have you adjusted on the revenue side, Alicia, what you're expecting in those additional tickets and different things that are going to go to state court?
I have.
Okay, I was going to say, maybe that was, but I'm sure you were conservative on that as well. So there's a possibility the revenue could, and I know for budgeting, we have to look at it a little bit different. But there is a possibility it could be a wash even if we went up.
That's correct. There could be there.
I do think that just based on what other counties are doing, the T is very low. And I would say 45 is, you know, may prove to be a little bit low as well. But they got some good starting point, but it definitely has to be. I know Meriwether's already spent almost $11,000 through six months. And then Coweta, its last four years have been averaging about 40, 43, I mean, 83, 5, somewhere in that range. And they could budget it at about $85,000 a year.
And I spoke with Judge Tossinger a few days ago. And I'm looking forward, after she's had some more time to be in office, this is her first term, but seeing where productivity ends up. And I don't mean that necessarily in relationship to the other judge. But I think we all know, and we're going to the solicitor's office as well, there's a lot of cases prior to COVID that we just could not get in front, whether it was a jury trial or the mass volume, whatever. So I think there's definitely potential, not that we're looking at just rendering justice with a profit, so to speak. But my point is, there's enough out there that there's the potential to bring in a good more revenue. So we definitely need to watch this to see what we can do. And I think Judge Tossinger, once she's had some more time under her belt, maybe can give us some more information to help us through the year. It'll be well into next fiscal year, but.
I think she's going to offer more time in court and you will see more cases processed through state court now than you have. And she's offering some efficiencies, too. She's utilizing Zoom for trial, not for trials, but for some of the going zone in the state court. So I do think there's some upside potential on the revenue side that could offset this. But those numbers aren't definitive until you've gone through a time, like you said, Commissioner Chance. She's also asked for some $3,000 in travel to go to the spring and fall conference, which had been attended long ago in history. But most recently in history, those had not been attended. She's asked for an additional $600 for bar fees and to join the judges' association. And she's asked for an additional $2,000 for the spring and fall conference for training purposes, for classes for her to go. And she's already very active with the other state court judges and trying to see what happens in other counties as far as state court and get some best practices put into place. In the solicitor's office, she was very happy to hear that we were doing the dollar an hour per employee. And she has one administrative person that she would like to get an additional dollar an hour, who has taken on some additional responsibilities and is bilingual and offers some services to some of the non-English speaking people who come through the solicitor's office. In magistrate court, Judge Donson asked for a 5% increase for all of his employees. The dollar an hour accomplishes that for all but one employee. And we would have to do a few cents more for that one employee that would be below 5, or the dollar an hour wouldn't quite get them to 5%. So I think we can satisfy his request with that. And then we've increased social security and retirement to reflect those increases. He has also requested $14,000 in his contractual services for E-courts, which is the, he came to us last year and told us that he would have to have that. And he's collecting that technology fee. He's already started collecting the technology fee. So he's got some money built up on the revenue side to offset the cost of this E-court. But he'll have to increase his budget. And then he wants an electronic signature system to sign warrants so he can basically sign warrants from his house if he needs to do so. Puts him on call 24 hours a day. And he had asked for some computer and equipment, too. Hopefully, we can fund that out of the FY '21 budget and not have to put that into the general fund budget.
And we're going to have our IT director, I guess, look at anything that we're doing technology-wise. I just want to, not saying that the judge doesn't know what he needs or anything. I just want to make sure that that new position is encompassing everything that goes on anywhere county-wide with technology.
Onto the probate judge. She's, in addition to that dollar an hour, she's asked for an additional dollar an hour for two of her clerks that continue to take on more work, especially with the workload that they've had in this past year and probably will continue to have. She's also asked for addition in her pay of $23,662 for being Article I judge. We've continued to research this and look into it. The Coweta probate judge receives a $25,000 a year supplement, as does the Meriwether County judge. And we have found that probate judges can hold back funding, or hold back funds. But our probate judge never has and is not requesting to now. So that's the, and this request is really to try to get her in line with what the other probate judges in this area are being compensated. I think the probate judge in Douglas County just got an increase to about $140,000. So.
What, there are not increases up there?
Yeah. And she's, I think she's being reasonable in her request. I mean, 111 puts her in line with, well, I mean, not even in line. She's slightly below all the other judges, including the juvenile court judge, state court judge. I'm not sure about magistrate, probably pretty much in line with the magistrate court. I'm not sure about magistrate, probably pretty much in line with the magistrate court.
Alicia, can I add some information?
Sure.
From some research? So, we all know we went through a transition period with administration, and George stepped up and was our interim chairman. We went through a lot of different things. But I wanted to go over just a little bit of research that I had done about this particular topic, and I think someone will have bring more into context. So, in recent years, the state had changed the minimum requirements for counties that are a hundred thousand and up population, that they had to essentially hold a lawyer's license, but they did not increase the minimum pay threshold. Judge Kason, at that time, went into effect when she was still our probate judge, but she was grandfathered in, and that requirement was not necessary at that point in time. When Judge Haney was first appointed, there was discussions amongst the chairman, operations manager at the time, and then Chief Judge Simpson. I have spoken with all three in, in previous time and in recent times to, to help me wrap my brain around exactly what went around. I think at that time, there was no formal declaration about what the pay increase would be, but it was understood that at some point in time, there would be a supplement that would be reached for the increased qualifications. And I'm gonna go into that in a little more depth in just a minute. An Article Six judge is also able to assist in both Superior and State Courts. I've spoken with both Judge Simpson and Judge Tassinger. And so, let's say Judge Tassinger was out of town, was sick, and there was an emergency or something that needed to be signed. I think, don't quote me to this, but I think essentially she could step in and sign or do some things there. The same thing in Superior Court, she could assist if that was needed. Another thing I want to talk about, for instance, is she can now hold a jury trial if it's needed. Before, that could not happen based on the prior qualifications that were required for the job. The other thing is, if there's an instance where she makes a ruling, that now has to go directly to the Georgia Supreme Court of Appeals, that no longer gets shuffled into local here at Superior Court. So, there's the capability that, that decisions, you know, would have in the past added more shuffle into our local Superior Court, now that's taken and goes straight to the state, so it's not bogging us down when she makes decisions from that round. I personally, and I'm not here to disparage the, the state or ACCG, I personally disagree with their methodology, but I want to give some context behind, I, I think, while we're even at this discussion with the supplement. So, they wanted, at the state level, wanted to increase the, the minimum qualifications. And I think by statute, you would, you would think, well, if you're gonna have to be required to have something, then you would also have an increase in pay. ACCG, to my understanding, essentially lobbied and liked the idea that they weren't forcing upon other counties that they were gonna have to meet a minimum threshold in monetary payment. That sounds good on the surface, but the reality is, that adds that much more subjectivity in how do you reach what a proper, you know, pay should be. As Alicia just pointed out, many probate judges have negotiated a portion of their department's vital records. That's something that we're not doing here. Looking at the other constitutional officers, for instance, the tax commissioner, she's allowed a dollar per parcel that is in addition to her standard pay and longevity and COAs and so forth. I know she does additional work for that, but that's just an example of where base pay can be the same in certain areas, but you start adding on the differentiations, you have the ability, here again, going back to the state, where there's laws put into place, where different ones can make different money depending on different things. So, I don't think we're out of basis with this. I do believe a pay increase is warranted here based off of, of the merits that I just went over. I don't know exactly what that should be. I don't have any reason to believe what's being presented is out of line. But there's a few things that I think that we need to, to, to take into consideration. First of all, I've heard a lot about her qualifications. She has X, Y, and Z, and so that makes her obviously, an increase in compensation would be warranted. I would agree with that, but I also would not lay all weight in that. And, and here's the differentiation. Let's say the sheriff currently, I think you only have to have a high school or a GED to actually serve in that position. Let's say the sheriff wanted to retire in eight years, and they brought a new sheriff in. I think we need to be careful. We're not setting a precedent that just because you have a higher education means that you deserve to get a supplement. What we're stating is, is that the state increased the minimum requirement. So, it would be no different if the next sheriff coming in, and I'm just making that up, eight years from now, if they require them to have a doctorates in criminology, that's totally different than only being required to have a high school diploma. And so, experience and longevity, I think, plays into this most definitely, but when the state is dictating the minimum requirements and then leaving it open, and, and that's the part I don't like. In some other instances, like in state courts, you've got a brand-new judge, Judge Tassinger, that was able to come in at the pay essentially of what the, the outgoing predecessor was able to. In this instance, that wasn't allowed. The subjectivity is sitting there for the supplement instead of being more or less dictated. We're now requiring the minimum of, of this education or for you to hold a lawyer's attorney's license. So, there's, there's a lot of subjectivity that's being left in our court. So, I want to make sure that if we approve this, it's not just because someone has higher education is why we're giving them more money, because I don't want to set the precedent for other constitutional officers in the future. The, the other thing, couple, a couple more points, Ernie. I also want to make sure that, that if we do this, that the, moving forward when we have pay increases, I want to make sure that we are in line if we need to be only adjusting to the base pay or longevity, you know, whatever the, the case may be, or do we need to be applying it to that end of the supplement? I, I want to make sure that we're not doing anything that wouldn't be in line of, of how we need to be increasing that pay, or do we just look at the total dollar amount of compensation, including the supplement? So, I think we need to be very careful. What are we approving in the moment, and what is the expectation moving forward? Where would that additional money be applied toward just the base or the base and the And I think that's, that's pretty much it. I know that was a mouthful, but here again, I, I think if you look at the history, it, it was not just the expectation of the administration, or it's not just the fact of, okay, well, it happens to be Judge Haney. I don't care if it was Josephus. This was the first judge coming in that was going to be held to the new standards that the other outgoing predecessor was not held to by the state statute. So, I think if you look at just that, that in and of itself, and understand that ACCG did not want to press the state to bump up that minimum monetary pay, they said leave that up to the counties. I disagree with that, but in, in the same note, that is the cards that we've been dealt. And I think that that's why we're here today, to even entertain the supplement now that I know some more history that I don't think we knew one or, or a couple of years ago. I think I've gotten a lot clearer picture and able to wrap my head around it now, so.
You summarize that very well. Yes, there are, many counties are facing this, you know, right now. Calwida is, for example, and I, I think they're looking at about a, you know, a similar bulk in pay. They do have an agreement. I understand I'm gonna be getting a copy of that agreement, so it may be something that, that, you know, may need to be shared here, because I, I think it addresses some of those issues. And I'm like you, I got a note right here that said the state should address this. And I agree with you one hundred percent. You know, they, they're really good, I think somebody was talking earlier about the state, you know, unfunded mandates. This is basically an unfunded mandate. Now, you've gotta go to this level, but we're really not gonna deal with it down here, or even tell you how to do it. I, I think they should have had a supplement in there. My thought of the supplement would be, that's something that you give over and above the, you know, the regular length of term and the cost of living. I try, I, if you can, I would treat that separately and look at it on a, you know, case-by-case basis. But I do know that, like, for example, in Meriwether, our judge there, we don't have a state court, but our probate judge does qualify because he is an attorney. And he has agreed to hear state court cases step in, a lot like we're talking here, if there's Superior Court issue that, that he could step forward. And we have, we have historically provided a forty-five thousand dollar salary supplement to that as well for those services. So, what's being requested is certainly aligned with what some of the others are doing, but I do agree that the state should have really addressed this.
And, and the takeaway is, I think it's somewhat unfair of, of what's been levied on Judge Haney, because let's say if she had ran for state court, she would have automatically come in about what the budget already was.
Right.
Okay? And, and I'm big on longevity, but I'm just saying that's what the statute reads. It doesn't read that in probate court. So, it looks like, well, we're just giving this person twenty-something thousand dollars that's only been here for a couple of years, but the reality is, that was almost the agreement, if you will, that was negotiated at the state level. Let's leave all the subjectivity up to the county. So, I don't, I, I think when you start looking at all the details, you realize, yes, we are, you know, considering giving the money, but I don't really see it as just this raise. I, I see it as the first person coming in that the new standards apply to, and we have to, we're being forced to address it in some manner, whatever the number ends up being.
Right. And, and I would say that, that, I know at least one instance where it was a long-term probate judge who was not an attorney, and an attorney missed out and come in and fill that spot for the retirement. And I would say that even with a supplement, they're probably still paying less than what they paid outgoing probate judge due to that amount of seniority that it built up through the years, that the new one coming in would not get. So, I, I agree with you. I don't think it's a, a pay increase. I think it is, you know, is, you know, something the state should have addressed into the minimum salaries, and they just didn't do it. They put it back on the counties to have to be able to deal with that. And, you know, most of.
You know, this, this came up last year. Clint, you and I did get the research on this, and I'm, I'm glad to see that it's coming to fruition now. And I, I did talk to a couple of our legislators.
Right.
About this, and you could just hear the crickets chirping in the background. You didn't, you didn't get a yes, you didn't get a no, it was, you know, so. And I agree, this is something that should have been addressed at, at the state level instead of putting it in our lap. But I'm, I'm glad to see that we're going to do something like this.
I tried to take notes. Would you please, sometime this afternoon, tonight, would you email all those to all of us here so that we can, I mean, I, the rest of y'all, I want to attach it to my, I tried to get your notes down, so, very valid points.
There is a, under ACCG, they do have a site called Pewty County Official Salaries to kind of give you a feel for what they are, what the levels are, et cetera. Again, it, it talks about just local legislation of being able to deal with, you know, something more. But maybe that'll, that'll save you maybe a little bit of a title, so that, that's there. And then they've got another booklet on the, you know, just on the role of those officials as well. But your, your summary was, was right on.
Well, I'm thankful, in a way, the state didn't tell us, because it could have been a lot higher. And I'm very, again, thankful that ED has come up with a reasonable amount we could work into our budget. But you're right, we need to figure out how to set a precedence for the next time this happens. So, thank you for those thoughts.
If I get the, if I can get a copy of the contract others have used, I'll get that over to, you know, to Avery to be able to.
I'm making notes.
Have notes, okay.
Ernie, did you want to say something?
Oh, yeah. Just a couple of points, but I'll say this, and the probate judge, or the state court judge, or whoever, tax commissioner probably, whatever, they, I mean, they have associations or cohorts that can readily give them benchmark data, or that we can readily see where they stack up, and, and so they can advocate for an increase. My bottom-line comment on, on this is that I'm also advocating for the other county employees that don't have such an association to go to and advocate for their stance. So, we have other county employees as well who can't come here with three pages of data off the cuff and advocate that, that they are getting paid twenty-six thousand dollars below what they should or whatever. So, as we consider one position who happened to be put into office, our other employees are just as diligent, very likely, in fulfilling their positions, and, and so I think we need benchmark data on them as well. Having said that, ED gave me a lot of information that you may have given y'all also, but speaking of benchmark information, what I have is, is great information. I'm like, yes, can we not get that for the others? So, it shows that for about twenty-eight, thirty different counties, the, the low of probate judge's salary is eighty-three thousand nine fourteen in Lounes County, and then not counting some of the metro counties like Cobb and Fulton and DeKalb. The high is in Cherokee County, one fifty-five, five eleven. Having said that, some other comparisons, benchmarks, are the other local officials in Carroll County. And so, we've got, well, Judge Kason, that was filling this role before, as you mentioned, was recording this at around one oh six, one oh six, four thirty-five. So, with, with that type of information, it, it looks like somewhere between eighty-three nine fourteen and a hundred and fifty-five thousand is where we should be falling. And, and the one eleven is, is in there. Now, should it be closer to the one oh six that Judge Kason was making, or do we want to go with one eleven? I mean, that, those smaller tweaks can be made. Looking at what we've got in the budget, I'm trying to come up with the one eleven. I'm about four thousand shy. So, the A three nine fourteen that she was making, plus the twenty-three six six two, comes up to one oh seven something? So, I'm just wondering.
Okay.
Do we need to?
She's currently at eighty-eight, one oh nine, fifty-eight.
Eighty-eight, okay.
Yeah.
So, she has eighty-three here, so.
The ACCG, well, that was, that was prior to the, the last increase that the ACCG gave all the constitutional officers.
Gotcha. Okay, good.
If you started out with the, the base salary, you were up two percent based upon the adjustments through ACCG. And if you get back in and add in the requested amount, you could be right on the top of that one eleven.
Mm-hmm, yeah, okay.
One final point, Chairman, if I could, that I, I reread my notes that I typed up last night. One final point I do want to make, even though she does have the capability, I think, to help out in state and Superior, I don't, I think there does not need to be an expectation that we dictate what her duties are. They still need to remain autonomous to that degree. So, if we hear, okay, is she spending twenty percent of her time in state court? That's, that's not what we're basing this off of. She has the capability to assist, but I do want to make it clear as well, that I don't think as a board that we're trying to dictate to her what her duties need to be. It's just that she now has the capability because of that license to do more.
And they do have that mental health court program that has been put under probate court as well, which is a, a great thing. I think that's a, a novel thing in the state, and I think we did a great thing for, for that, because mental health is such an issue, but just want to add that in there.
Mental health is probably the biggest issue all governments have to contend with right now. I, I mean, you just hear it time and time and time again. And, you know, if we can find a way to solve some of those issues, some of these other budgetary numbers would go down.
Mm-hmm.
For sure. Well, let's, let's try to get on through the probate court budget, and then we maybe want to take a break for lunch. The mental health line item, we had approved that mobile crisis unit, so this reflects the increase in the mobile crisis unit and the increase in the, in the grant for this year. There was a three percent increase. the increase in the, in the grant for this year. There was a 3% increase there. And then the judge also asked for $2,000 of funding in computer furniture and equipment, and we're gonna try to buy that out of, out of the year-end funds. So that's the conclusion of the probate budget request. And I think we've done a good job of discussing. Thank you for, Commissioner Chance, for all your insight in, in work that you did on looking into this, because I think you did a very thorough job. Good explanation.
Okay, so with no further discussion on that, but there again, when we come back, if you have other questions, we can certainly address them. So I have on my 12th, well, 12/14. So let's take a one-hour break, or would y'all like to do a little bit less to move us on with the day?
45.
45 minutes long enough for lunch? Okay, so let's come back promptly at 1 o'clock to resume, and we'll start with juvenile court unless there's any previous questions.